In accordance with Open Public Meetings Act P.L. 1975, Chapter 231, adequate notice of this regular meeting of the Planning Board of the Township of Franklin has been provided. If everyone would please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Councilman Chase.
He's just outside the door there.
Okay, well, for the record, then he's walking in. Mr. Howe.
Here.
Mr. Steinhour.
Here.
Mr. Geiger.
Here.
Mr. Metler.
Yeah.
Mr. Yacke.
Yes.
Mr. Pettit.
Here.
Mr. Thomas.
Mr. Pataznak.
Chairman Arcini.
Here.
So we have...
We got you.
I got you as you're coming.
Got you in motion.
Minutes, somewhere.
Do you want to do them both together?
Um, probably separately because... Yeah, we got a couple of different people who can't... Let's do March 4th first.
All right. If there's no discussion, I move to approve the minutes of March 4th.
Second.
Councilman Chase.
Yes.
Steinhour.
Yes.
Mr. Geiger.
Yes.
Mr. Metler.
Yeah.
Mr. Yacke.
Yes.
Mr. Pettit.
Yes.
That's it.
Mr. Thomas is walking in.
Oh, okay. Good. Yeah, I think that was the meeting I wasn't at. Um, the regular meeting of April 1st, 2015.
If there's no discussion, I move to approve the minutes.
Second.
Councilman Chase.
Yes.
Mr. Steinhour.
Yes.
Mr. Geiger.
Yes.
Mr. Metler.
Yeah.
Mr. Yacke.
Yes.
Mr. Pettit.
Yes.
Chairman Arcini. Yes. There are two resolutions tonight. Oh, before I go any further, um, for the record, let me just state that the hearings, one hearing here, the Bank of America, PLN 14-00015, site plan with sign variances for Hamilton Street is carried to June 3rd, and no further notices required. So if anybody's here for that, um, or wants to be here for that, that's when it'll be, June 3rd. So, Resolutions K., PLN 14-00016.
Move to approve.
Councilman Chase.
Yes.
Mr. Geiger.
Yes.
Mr. Metler.
Yeah.
Mr. Yacke.
Yes.
Mr. Pettit.
Yes.
Mr. Thomas.
Yes.
Chairman Arcini. Yes. And Kelly, PLN 08-00008.
Move to approve.
Second.
Councilman Chase.
Yes.
Mr. Howe.
Yes.
Mr. Geiger.
Yes.
Mr. Metler.
Yeah.
Mr. Pettit.
Yes.
Mr. Thomas.
Yes.
Chairman Arcini. Yes. Um, approval of the monthly retainer for our Planning Board Attorney, Clarkin and Vignolo, in the sum of 83333.
Move to approve.
Councilman Chase.
Yes.
Mr. Howe.
Yes.
Mr. Steinhour.
Yes.
Mr. Geiger.
Yes.
Mr. Metler.
Yeah.
Mr. Yacke.
Yes.
Mr. Pettit.
Yes.
Mr. Thomas.
Yes.
Chairman Arcini. Yes. So, um, our first order of business, we have two master plan amendments to discuss tonight, um, for hearings. One is the fair share plan, the other is Hamilton Street Business District. So, um, I'll turn it over to Mark for the introduction to the master plan for the fair share.
Good evening. Um, for the record, I'm Mark Healy. I'm the Director of Planning at Franklin Township. I usually sit up there, but for the purpose of this, I'll sit down here so that I can address the board and answer any questions. Sitting to my left is Ed Bakker. He is an attorney with the Township Attorney's Office. Would you mind giving just a brief summary, perhaps, of your area of expertise?
Evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Ed Bakker, I'm an attorney with the Dakota's Law Firm. I've been practicing in the area of land use law for over 30 years. I had a particular interest and expertise in the area of Mount Laurel. I was the first attorney to ever represent the council on affordable housing, known as COA. I defended the constitutionality of the Fair Housing Act in the Supreme Court, and I've been involved since that time in representing both development and municipal interests in the area of affordable housing, and particularly with the Mount Laurel doctrine, and I'm pleased to be able to assist in the representation of Franklin Township.
All right, so I'm going to give a...
Just one thing for the record.
Yes, sir.
So, anyone following this, you were sworn in at the annual reorganization meeting of the board beginning of the year. You were made under oath, so any testimony provided means under oath.
Okay. Thank you for that.
You got it.
And also, for the record, I am a professional planner, and my license is in good standing, and a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners. On March 10th, the New Jersey Supreme Court issued its ruling on the most recent case brought before it regarding COA's third round rules. The decision returned to determination of whether municipality is meeting its affordable housing obligation to the courts. Immediately upon the ruling coming into effect the week of June 8th, the township intends to file for declaratory judgment seeking the protection of the courts from potential builders' remedy lawsuits. This filing will include a new fair share plan, which is before you tonight, that demonstrates the township's compliance with its constitutional obligation to provide housing affordable to low and modern income households. The plan was provided to you in your agenda packet and has been up on the township website for a few weeks. This hearing has been noticed per the municipal land use law, and those on COA's service list have been provided notice of this hearing. The plan before you tonight consists of two main components, a housing element and a fair share plan. The housing element is a required component of the plan and provides an analysis of the existing housing stock, including values and rents, occupancy characteristics, and demonstrates the diversity of the township's housing stock. The township's... It also demonstrates the township's demographic characteristics and population trends, including household characteristics, age characteristics, income and poverty levels, race and Hispanic origin, as well as other demographic characteristics. It also contains existing and future employment characteristics. The fair share plan, which frankly is the meat of the matter, or the plan, demonstrates the township's compliance with its affordable housing obligation. It also contains an updated spending plan that demonstrates how the township's affordable housing trust fund will be spent over the next 10 years. The fair share plan has three main components. There's the prior round obligation, which covers the period from 1986 to 1999, the third, quote-unquote, "third round obligation" covering the period from 1999 to 2025, and we also have to address our housing rehab obligation. I'll start with a quick overview of the prior round obligation. That is, again, our obligation from 1986 to 1999. That obligation was 766 units. The township exceeded its obligation by 97 units. 723 affordable units were constructed during that time period. There was a 140-unit family rental bonus that was applicable, and that results in a total of 863 total credits. We also met our prior round rental obligation of 160 units, with 196 such units constructed. In terms of the third round obligation, our obligation is 1,000 units. The plan demonstrates that the township significantly exceeds its third round obligation. In this plan, the township is claiming 1,348 credits toward its third round obligation, which consists of 1,001 actual units, 250 bonus credits, and the 900... No, I'm sorry, the 97 unit surplus from the prior round. Of the 1,001 units included in the third round obligation, the following is noted: 753 of the units have already been constructed and are occupied by very low, low, and modern income households. Another 2,008 units have site development approvals in place, some of which, for example, Summerfields are already under construction. The remaining 40 units, the Habitat for Humanity III units, and the last phases of the Leewood development are zoned for such purposes and have necessary agreements in place that address the obligation. So, for example, in the terms of Habitat for Humanity, we have development agreements that address the sale of those units, of those lots, to Habitat for Humanity, and their obligation to provide affordable housing on those lots. And in the case of Leewood, we have a redevelopment agreement in place with them that obligates them to provide a total of 105 units. The town... The plan demonstrates the township's compliance with the following, I'll call them subrequirements. There is a requirement for family housing, which is 50% of the obligation, which equals 500 units. Plan demonstrates that we've provided 688 family units. There's an age-restricted limitation. No more than 25% of the obligation can consist of senior affordable units. So that caps us at 250 senior affordable units, and we comply with that. Rental housing requirement, 25... At least 25% of our obligation shall consist of rental housing, which is 25%, equals 250 units, and we provide 869 rental units. Family rental, 50% of the rental housing obligation, so 50% of the 250 that I just mentioned, have to consist of family rental. Of the... We have an obligation of 125, and we've provided 556 family rental units. And lastly, there is a very low-income requirement, which is 13% of the obligation, which results in an obligation of 130, and we've provided 145 very low-income units. And lastly, in terms of bonus credits, I had mentioned that we are applying 250 bonus credits. We are capped at... You can't apply for more than 25% of your obligation in the form of bonus credits. We've gone up to that 250-unit cap, and we're not seeking any more credits than we are allowed... Bonus credits than we are allowed. The vast majority of the developments included in this plan were included in our third-round plan that received substantive certification from COA, the vast majority of which have since been constructed and occupied. So we received... We submitted our plan in 2008. We received substantive certification in 2010. It's now 2015, and all... Basically, what we said we were going to do, we have done. That consists of the following developments: Avalon at Somerset, it's also known as Lauderay at that time. It's constructed and occupied, and that contains 58 affordable units. Berry Street Commons, constructed and occupied, 92. Cedar Manor, constructed and occupied, it includes 28 affordable units. Flores Town Homes, the approvals are in place for that, both the use variance and site plan approval, and that has a requirement for five affordable units. Franklin Commons, constructed and occupied, 65 affordable units. Habitat for Humanity I and II, constructed and occupied, 16 units. Hidden Brook at Franklin, it's also known as Presbyterian Homes, constructed and occupied, 85 affordable units. Leewood, 21 have been constructed and occupied, with the remainder, as I'd mentioned before, being subject to redevelopment agreement, and that's going to... That is going to total 105. Parkside Senior, constructed and occupied, 69. Parkside Family, constructed and occupied, 68. Somerset Park, constructed and occupied, 84. Summerfields at Franklin, under construction, 150 affordable units, and special needs housing, there are 58 constructed and occupied affordable units. And we've also had a few new developments that have come up since we've received substantive certification. The two of them have since been constructed and occupied. One is the Independence Crossing Development at the corner of Hamilton and Franklin, and that contains 51 affordable units. And Voorhees Station, which is an RPM's redevelopment area, and that is constructed and occupied as well, and that contains 61 affordable units. Further, through the participation in the State's Special Needs Partnership Program, we are going to be creating another six in the form of special needs housing, and again, the previously mentioned agreement with Habitat for Humanity, where six additional units are going to be created within the township. Lastly, in terms of the rehab obligation, we have an obligation for 171 units. We have, so far, rehabbed a total of 109 units, leaving an obligation of 62 for the 10-year planning period. That's about seven units per year. We do have an ongoing housing rehab program, and that number of seven units per year is about what we do, frankly, is a little bit less, so we're more than capable of meeting that obligation through our existing program. So in summary, the township exceeds its 1,000-unit obligation by 348 through 1,001 affordable units, 250 bonus credits, 97 prior round surplus. The township has received requests for inclusion in the fair share plan. These were provided to you in your packet. You also have before you tonight, we've received an objection to our plan dated yesterday, and that is also provided to you right in front of you. We have not included these requests in the plan, and I'll go over each of these requests. The first was from Starlight Meadows, which is located on Bunker Hill Road. We have not included this development. Frank... Well, number one reason is we exceed our obligation, so we don't feel we are obligated to include it. All of the existing... Well, I'll just say that. Starlight Meadows' proposal is at 15 units to the acre, which is 90 times the permitted density of the site's current A zoning. The site is not located within the township's sewer service area, which is a significant factor. Sewer service is not available in close proximity to the site. The... In their initial letter to the township, they'd indicated that there is a sewer line in front of the site. That is, in fact, a force main that serves the existing Grigstown neighborhood. That was done about 15 years ago, I believe, as a result of a public... That... My understanding is those neighborhoods were originally cottage communities, summer communities. Over time, they were converted into permanent residents. The septic systems in those neighborhoods failed, and as a result of a public safety emergency, those neighborhoods were added to the sewer service area, and the infrastructure to serve that, in terms of the force main and the pump station, were sized very carefully to only serve that existing development. And I also confirmed with the Sewers Authority that existed or further development cannot tap into that force main. The closest serviceable or connectable service line to that development is almost a mile away on Route 27. Same applies to the water. There's no public water to that site. So though... For those reasons, as well as the fact that, frankly, we've met our obligation, that site is not included in our plan. We also received a proposal from Schoolhouse Developers. They are proposing a site on the corner of Metler's and Schoolhouse be added to our... To be included in our plan. We have not included it, again, for the reason that we don't feel we need it to meet our obligation. We've exceeded our obligation. That site is zoned M1 light industry, so we have not included that in our plan. Lastly, also before you tonight, we have a letter received today from the County Planning Board. As required by municipal land use law, the plan, as well as the notice, was required to be sent to the County Planning Board. They have reviewed our plan and have provided us a memo. I'd like to just quote a few things from that memo for the record. They have... They applaud the township for its, quote, "ongoing, successful, and proactive efforts to support the creation of affordable housing," as demonstrated in the analysis contained in the plan, end quote. They, quote, "see the township as a role model statewide," end quote, in this regard. Finally, the township says that the township's, quote, "outstanding planning over the years has resulted in appropriately directing residential and employment growth into concentrated employment nodes, mixed-use corridors, and diverse neighborhoods that include a variety of housing types at all levels of affordability," while protect... End quote, "while protecting rural and agricultural and environmentally sensitive areas of the township." So, thought that was important to put on the record. Again, that was a letter received today. That's the summary of the plan. If the board has any questions.
What about Mr. Shimannowitz's arguments?
Why don't I take an opportunity to address that? The Supreme Court opinion, as Mark outlined, provides, in the first instance, an opportunity for municipalities to institute a declaratory judgment action and thereby trigger court jurisdiction to consider what a municipal affordable housing obligation is and how that obligation should be met. The... Consequently, that obligation is unsettled. There has not been a determination by any court as to what the number, if you will, is for any particular municipality. This plan is predicated upon a number, an estimate of what the obligation is, that has been presented by the housing advocacy group Fair Share Housing Center. It's a very high estimate of the need for affordable housing in New Jersey. It's been the subject of great criticism, but because it is such a high number, what the township has proposed to do was to take the very conservative approach and take... Use that as the target to attempt to meet affordable housing... An affordable housing obligation. That methodology that Fair Share has proposed, which came up with the number, the township has not adopted, has not endorsed. It's a... It's a target that has been the subject of the housing element, Fair Share Plan that's before you. The criticism that you've received of this housing element from, in particular, Mr. Shimannowitz, is that the Fair Housing Act imposes a cap of 1,000 units upon any municipality, such that that municipality's character will not be undermined by the imposition of an obligation that would change the nature of a community. That's in the Fair Housing Act. COA adopted a regulation to implement the 1,000-unit cap. Mr. Shimannowitz argues with the application of the 1,000-unit cap in this particular instance. It's interesting to note that the 1,000-unit cap was also applied by Fair Share Housing Center in its determination of what municipal housing obligations are. So while the objection and the contention that's being raised is perhaps an interesting one, that one will... That will be subject to further litigation in the courts once the declaratory judgment is filed and once the municipality's affordable housing obligation is to be addressed. But for purposes of this proceeding and for purposes of the township identifying an obligation that it intends to address, our recommendation, and what Mark has addressed, is to take the most conservative approach that's been out there, as proposed by Fair Share Housing Center. So while it's a... It's an interesting comment and objection, I would recommend to you that it would be better suited for addressing that within the context of litigation that the courts are going to have to undertake to determine not only Franklin's obligation, but all the municipalities within the state.
He claims that our real obligation... The Kinsey report's real calculation is 2,726. Where did that come from?
That's a component of the Kinsey determination, and what he does is he goes to one-half of the analysis and stops there. Following that gross calculation of numbers, the Kinsey analysis, purportedly following the Rounds 1 and 2 methodology of COA, has that number reduced. And ultimately, you'll see in the Kinsey analysis, the last column is the affordable housing obligations for all municipalities in the state, which gives rise to their estimate that New Jersey needs to reduce over 200,000 units of affordable housing. That ultimate calculation is the one that the township relies upon.
Just want to know whether I can sleep soundly at night.
Any other questions to Mark or Ed on this? Yep, if not, let's make a motion open to the public.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, this part of the master plan hearing is open to the public for anyone who wishes to speak. You'll come and give your name, address, and be a...
Good evening. My name is Brian Plocker. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Hutton-Shimannowitz. It was my colleague, Ron Shimannowitz, which wrote the letter objecting to the housing plan dated May 19, 2015. With all due respect to Mr. Bakker, the really the issue that the heart of the objection goes to is how the township actually applied its credits and bonuses in connection with the 1,000-unit cap. We are not arguing that the town is not entitled to a 1,000-unit cap. However, the Kinsey report upon which the township's proposed plan is predicated upon uses the 1,000 as a net number, and that's important for reasons I will get into. But what the town does is sees the 1,000 net number in Mr. Kinsey's report, and then the town subtracted all the credits and the bonuses which your planner so eloquently went through, thereby saying the township has satisfied its third round. However, it's important that the 1,000-unit cap is a net, and Mr. Kinsey's own report, which the town relies upon on page 39, it's important, he notes that the 1,000-unit cap is calculated after verifying and subtracting from the prospective need obligation any credits, units, and bonuses to which the municipality is entitled for previous affordable housing activity. Mr. Kinsey did calculate a larger number of 2,726, and the way I understand his methodology, which he drafted for Fair Share Housing Center, is then when you take into the credits off the high number of 2,726, if that number is still at 1,000 or more, which it was in Franklin's case, therefore, the town is entitled to reduce their third-round obligation to the 1,000-unit cap. What the township's planner did is looked at what was the net number, the final number from Mr. Kinsey, and it is noted as net in the chart attached to Mr. Kinsey's report. The final number column says "third round, net prospective need." The town took that 1,000 and then subtracted all of the credits and bonuses. And right now, what we'll reserve our right, but we are not arguing as to the validity of those credits and bonuses, just from the fact that they were subtracted off of the 1,000-unit cap, as opposed to Mr. Kinsey's pre-credited, what I'll call the real number of 2,726. So I did not say on the record, but I do represent Starlight Meadows LLC. The planner did speak about my client's property. I'm not here to discuss the specifics of my client's property, only to object to the housing plan and fair share element for the reasons I went through, and that the town's net obligation now is 1,000 units pursuant to the Fair Housing Act and as confirmed by Mr. Kinsey's own report. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak?
Thank you. I'm Doreen Blank Rockstrom. I'm Executive Director of the Raritan Valley Habitat for Humanity, and I'm not here tonight to speak...
I'm sorry, can you spell your...
I'm sorry?
Could you spell your last name?
My last...
Thank you.
Right. I'm not here tonight to comment directly on your plan, but rather to extend my appreciation for the support that the Township of Franklin has given to the Raritan Valley Habitat for Humanity for our many opportunities to build affordable housing, not rental housing, but home ownership housing. As some of you may know, we were awarded last year $191,000 from Somerset County from a combination primarily of the home funds from HUD and the homelessness trust funds. And in probably three weeks, we are going to start building. We actually just acquired the two properties on Churchill Avenue here in Somerset. We acquired that Monday, actually, and as soon as we get through the zoning department and get our building permits, I expect that we will start, probably in about three weeks, the building of two additional, or two... The two affordable homes on Churchill Avenue. This adds to something like 17 or 18 homes that we have very successfully built in Franklin Township. in Franklin Township, many of them in Somerset, for homeowners. Couple of, I guess about a month ago, we were again made a very substantial award from Somerset County with both of these funds, the home funds and the homelessness trust funds, to the tune of $270,000. And these are earmarked for three more properties in Franklin Township. So again, we're not dealing with rental. We're in a position to deal with and help with abandoned houses. We can do what we call brush...
I don't want to interrupt you, but this is supposed to be for the comments.
I'm sorry.
It's an actual public hearing on that, so...
I'm sorry.
And we, let me tell you, the board appreciates your comments, but...
Okay. No, I just really wanted to make my statement and have it be put in the record because I am most appreciative.
And I do want to mention, this is very important. We're going to be paving Churchill in a month. So you need to get your sleeves or your water taps in now because once it's paved, nothing can happen, was it three or five years? You won't be able to go into the road. So you need to get that work done ASAP, or you won't be able to do it.
And you're trying to make the building permits?
You need, you need to get at least the water or the sewer taps in because you won't be able to dig into the road. There's a prohibition after we pave a road for five years.
Okay.
So you need to do that in the next month, so you...
Okay, I appreciate that. I was not aware of the paving, and that's very important information. And I'll pass it on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else from the public wishing to speak on the Fair Share Plan?
Move to close the meeting to the public.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I just have one, one last question for both Ed and Mark. In my understanding, a third-round obligation was substantively certified by COA. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. I guess, what do we need to do now?
Well, you have a resolution be, be before you that you, if you're so inclined to adopt...
They need to adopt it first and then adopt the resolution.
Adopt the plan.
Adopt the plan.
And then adopt the resolution.
So we move to adopt the Fair Share Plan.
Yes.
Make a motion.
Councilman Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Howe?
Yes.
Steinhauer?
Yes.
Mr. Iverson?
Yes.
Mr. Mettler?
Yes.
Mr. Niyaka?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Chairman Arcini?
Yes.
I just got here.
Yeah, you, you don't vote because you're the, we have a full board today.
Oh, great.
So you don't get, unfortunately...
I didn't know I missed.
You get to take, you can participate, but you don't get to vote.
Okay, so in, in the packet that starts with Mark's memo that he just went through, there's a resolution that you'll see on today's date memorializing what we just did. So let's have a motion on that, please.
And make a motion.
To prove...
To memorialize.
Second.
Councilman Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Howe?
Yes.
Steinhauer?
Yes.
Mr. Iverson?
Yes.
Mr. Mettler?
Yes.
Mr. Niyaka?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Chairman Arcini?
Yes. Okay, so that business is done. So, Mark, you might, you can stay where you are if you want, but the Hamilton Street corridor should be fairly brief. I know we just talked about this the last time we met. So this is basically incorporating all the discussion that we had multiple times.
Yes, yes.
So do you maybe briefly want to at least recap what that, what the highlights of that are just to refresh our memory before we adopt?
Just real quick in terms of background. This started, this effort started with the formation of the Hamilton Street Advisory Board. The committee evaluated the strengths and weaknesses and opportunities to how to revitalize Hamilton Street. One of the main things that they identified as a key thing was the desire or the need to encourage investment in private redevelopment along the corridor. And they identified zoning, the zoning for the area as a potential thing that was thwarting that investment in redevelopment. So they formed a zoning subcommittee to evaluate this. They eventually, the full Hamilton Street Board made recommendations to the planning board, asked the planning board to evaluate those recommendations, which you did. And they have since been made into a master plan amendment that is before you as well as a draft ordinance that's included in the appendix. I, why don't I, and you've, you've heard, and it's on the record in terms of the actual master plan, all the different analysis that has gone in and the different considerations that went into the recommendations. So I think what the chairman wants me to do is highlight the recommendations and the changes. So first, in terms of permitted uses, overall, again, overall, the nature of the permitted uses, it was found that the uses were consistent with the nature of the area as a walkable, quote-unquote, downtown Main Street, which is the vision for the area. There are some recommendations. One is to eliminate standalone townhouse apartments and independent senior living facilities as permitted uses and that the zone would require mixed-use development. That is only permitting such residential use when provided with first-floor commercial. And again, that's a very standard development type in a area, Main Street-type area like Hamilton Street, and is currently a permitted use right now. The plan recommends the elimination of two-family homes, two-family dwellings as a permitted use, and eliminates single-family dwellings as a permitted use on Hamilton Street. Because again, we want to encourage commercial and mixed-use development along Hamilton Street as opposed to single-family homes. It proposes the elimination of contractor-design-build operations as a conditional permitted use and adds outdoor dining as a permitted accessory use. And that was based on the discussion, one of the items that came out of the planning board's discussion. In terms of the bulk standards, generally, the standards are appropriate for such an area in terms of lot area, the setbacks, the coverage requirements, et cetera. So there are only a few requirements that are proposed to change. The 85% impervious coverage is proposed to stay, while the building coverage is proposed to go up to 50%. And there was some discussion about, well, what if there are structured or underground parking? Should we come up with some different requirement? And the planning board decided, let's keep it at 50. If you do get a proposal to do structured or underground parking, somebody can make a variance for that to go larger, and you would review that on a case-by-case basis. And there's language to that effect in the master plan. As far as parking requirements, this is something we discussed at length. In summary, there are unique standards along Hamilton Street for parking. There is lower parking standards on Hamilton Street compared to, say, commercial developments along Route 27 or Eastern Avenue. And that's in light of the desire to make it walkable. Also, the fact that there is, as opposed to Eastern Avenue, Route 27, there is some on-street public free parking in the area. There are some requirements or some recommendations to change the requirements. One is to allow the approving board on a case-by-case basis to reduce the parking requirements for one and/or two bedroom units below that ordinarily required based on the nature of the application and the expected occupancy. And there's language in the master plan that recommends that the approving board be able to place appropriate restrictions, for example, deed restrictions, to impose the appropriate restrictions to make sure the parking levels stay consistent with their testimony. Design standards and signage requirements, again, there are. The zoning, the zoning requirements generally work. There are very detailed design standards specific to Hamilton Street and that encourage its development as a pedestrian-friendly Main Street. Roof design, design standards related to storefront and facade treatments, awnings and canopies. There's, there's actually specific design sta, or I'm sorry, sign standards unique to Hamilton Street. And all of those are proposed or recommended to remain. There are some recommendations with respect to that. Number one, it is recommended that the design standards, which are good, but it's all text, that they be supplemented with illustrations and diagrams to make it clear what we really want. That's not in the proposed ordinance yet. That's going to be a little bit more time-consuming, so that'll follow this effort. And there's also a recommendation to prohibit freestanding signs along Hamilton Street. Existing freestanding signs would be grandfathered in. And lastly, we looked at other potential incentive zoning techniques that we could use to further incentivize the private reinvestments along Hamilton Street. And the main way that we are proposing to do that is through some flexibility on building height and allowing developers to go up a little bit. The existing standard right now is two and a half stories and 40 feet. We've had a number of proposals, frankly, over the last few years, where basically each of them has been allowed to go up to three stories and 40 feet. So there's some precedence, again, to allow developers to go up. And we note that allowing developers to go up can act as a significant incentive. However, if we're going to go up, the caution is we have to make sure that we allow for larger site area to accommodate for the larger parking demand that comes with a larger building and the other site demands such as stormwater drainage, et cetera. So the recommendation is to actually keep the base building height limitation at two and a half stories and 40 feet, but to allow an increase up to three stories if the development consists of the residential units have no more than two bedrooms and that a certain percentage of the units consist of one-bedroom units. And it's, it's, and this is recommended to allow an additional option to developers. They could keep at the existing two and a half stories and 40 feet. Or if they wish to go up and use the option to go up to three stories, then they would have to be, then they would have to comply with these additional requirements. And then there's another option to go up to four stories and 45 feet. We would continue that same two-bedroom, no more than two-bedroom requirement. And there's also a requirement that a certain percentage has to be one-bedroom units. But then because we're going whole 'nother story, and that's a much larger, and the parking demand goes up proportionately, we are proposing that the developments, that the lot area be no less than 40,000 square feet or roughly an acre. Right now, it's 10,000. So you'd have to have about an acre to go up to four stories. And you'd also have to have the full 200-foot depth and 200-foot frontage. And the reason for these is, again, it allows, again, an additional option for developers. They can take advantage of this if they choose to, or they can continue to develop under the existing requirements. It also, in terms of the two-bedroom and the one-bedroom, it does encourage developers to revitalize and develop the area with unit types that we feel are attractive for the area, smaller households, young professionals, perhaps grad students at Rutgers or Robert Wood Johnson. So we want to encourage developers to come in and provide housing for those markets. And in the larger lot area in depth, we also want developers, one of the things that we've experienced is we've had a lot of piecemeal development, 10,000, 10,000 here, 10,000 there. We want to encourage some, you know, the larger scale. We want the area to be revitalized quicker. And the way you do that is for developers to be required to have larger lot areas. And then, you know, with that requirement, they'd be allowed to go up to four stories, and they'd get that return by having a larger, you know, a larger development with more units. And then last, actually, this last, in terms of the depth of the Hamilton Street business zone and its alignment with the special improvement district. And the special improvement district is the actual, that's not a zoning district. That is a district that is a special assessment area where the commercial businesses are assessed an additional fee, I think for lack of a better term, and that those fees go towards and are earmarked for that area for special purposes for that area. There was some thought that the Hamilton Street zoning district and the CID have to align. There are some areas in the Franklin Boulevard area and Hamilton Street where there's some areas that are zone general business. So for example, where the Kentucky Fried Chicken is, is, that's general business. That's not actually in the Hamilton Street zone. And then there's also across the street areas that are zoned and where the, the post office, those are zone office professional. Those are in the special improvement district, but they're not in the Hamilton Street zoning district. It's our opinion that they don't have to align. It's appropriate that there be some supportive districts next to Hamilton Street, but they're still part of the same commercial corridor. So they would, they would stay in this, this special improvement district but keep their existing zoning. There are some recommendations to change the zoning of certain properties. The Quickmart site in the office building at the corner of Hamilton Street and Franklin Boulevard, they're currently within the office professional zone. That is proposed to be included in the Hamilton Street business district. So that would allow those properties, if they so choose, to be redeveloped in accordance, and it would allow mixed-use development on those properties, or they can continue at their, with their current uses in perpetuity. Similarly, the extending down the east side of Franklin Boulevard, Block 134, it contains the car wash and a few other commercial uses going down the east side of Franklin Boulevard. Those are within the general business district. Is proposed to add those lots as well to the HBD district, again, to allow those properties to be redeveloped, allow the mixed-use development of those sites. And then lastly, there's a site that is on Mark Street. It is a non-conforming commercial, I guess it's a contractor's yard. It's been the subject of some issues over the years. It's recommended that that be added to the HBD zone. It would not be permitted to be developed as a commercial use or a Main Street's commercial use on its own because it has no frontage on Hamilton Street. But by adding it to the HBD, it would allow it to be included into the eventual potential redevelopment of the Johns Plaza Shopping Center. It adjoins and is surrounded by that property. As far as, and then are some recommendations, lastly, in terms of the special improvement district. There's some property that's located in the Churchill Millstone Mixed Use Zone, which is actually in our redevelopment area. And they're actually residential properties, so they're not even assessed a fee anyway. It's recommended that that come out of the special improvement district because they really shouldn't overlap with our redevelopment. That that's another planning initiative with different rules in place. And in terms of, and then there's a recommendation to add the St. Peters and Paul's site to the special improvement district. They would not be assessed a fee since they are not a commercial use, but by adding them, they are at a very important gateway location to the Hamilton Street corridor. And by including them in the CID, they could be at the table and involved in the revitalization of Hamilton Street. So it's recommended that that site be added. That is the summary, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks. Mark, any, any questions from the board?
Yes.
I just had a question of the residential properties that already exist right now. I don't know how many there are. I mean, you drive down the street, looks like they're houses, but there seems to be offices here and there. How many residential are there on that street, I guess, approximately?
Well, in the corridor altogether or along Hamilton Street?
Just half of the street itself, just for...
Fronting Hamilton Street, I, I'm going to guess somewhere between 10 and 20?
That's all, actually. No, I just wondered what, what's the disposition? Let's say I'm a homeowner.
It might be higher, it might be closer to 20.
I've got a house, I want to put a shack up. Now we changed the order. That's a variance then, right? They're going to be in variance to do anything with their property?
If, if they were to... Well, I think Vince could probably answer this more directly. If they want to put an addition to the house...
Yeah, in the zone, the new zone.
I, I, they would need a variance, is that correct? They could do, they could do minor work as far as a shed and other things, but they would propose...
Addition would require them to have a variance.
Could it be a non-conforming use, it'd be an expansion of the non-conforming use.
I thought, I just want to make sure. And then the other thing is, when you're talking about story height, like two and a half or four, or 30 feet? Is it 40 feet?
40.
Two and a half or four, now, I don't know how you, what are you calling a story height? Where do you measure the top floor to, the top of the roof? If it's a power pit, do you measure it halfway up the slope? What do you, how do you...
Yeah, we, we have a, yeah, we have a definition in our, in our ordinance, and it's, it's measured from the average elevation at the front of the building to the, the roof peak.
The peak or the midway?
Yeah, it's the roof peak, I believe. But, and we have a definition of story, so you know what they have, what they have.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, a normal, a normal story in an office building is approximately 10 feet. You got the eight-foot ceiling, then you got the space for a structural element. Then you got another 10 feet space for a structural element. You got another, so right there, to go with a three-story office building, the structural elements and the roof elements, it's about 30 feet. And that's, but that's more than, I guess, in our definition, that's more than, what we say are two and a half feet or, two and a half stories or 40 feet.
That's the existing standard, and it, and we did look at the developments.
Well, you should put the words in, or less, or something like...
No, it's both, both.
You have to, you have to be both.
Comply with both. The maximum is two and a half stories, and the maximum is 40 feet. So you have to comply with both. That, that's what applies, not just in the... And, and...
Yeah, when you're including the peak or the roof, that's what you're including.
Yeah. And the developments that have been approved by the Board on Hamilton Street, the three-story, they've all complied with the 40.
Two-and-a-half.
Even the three-story developments.
Twenty-five feet.
Where are you going with this, Jim? What is this?
I just want to clarify, I'm just asking so I understand what he's talking about.
Okay.
That's the only place I'm going with it. I'm not going anywhere with it.
Well, no, that's...
I just want to... No, because it's always been... When we start describing things as, you know, story height, you're talking about going to four stories. That won't... We don't know what that's going to be, and you've explained that you're going to need more area, an acre to go to four stories.
Yeah.
All right, okay. I want to understand it, that's all. I'm just...
Yeah, I think the question of story is... Well, I mean, it's... I think it's relatively straightforward. It's one floor top of another, half-story.
You provide dimension, see, there's an ambiguity there. That's okay, leave it alone. I'm happy. Never mind, he asked my question.
Mark, you mentioned that the Hamilton Street businesses would be assessed a fee.
Well, they are now.
And it would have certain uses. Could you give an example of what some of those uses are?
In terms of how the fee is used?
How is it spent?
Well, I'm going to defer to the Executive Director of the Hamilton Street Advisory Board, Vince Dominick.
Every year, the... We have a budget. And for instance, this year, they're getting flags, they're getting some cameras for the street, they're getting new tops to the waste buckets we have on the street, so that it makes it harder for people to put residential garbage in there. That's a typical type of thing. They could do marketing. They're doing a little bit of marketing this year. Once the things get going, they'll probably do a little bit more in the future, but those are examples. Every year, they propose a budget, and council... In the past, there was a separate organization, you know, a 501(c)(3) that did that, that went to council, and the council has the ultimate approval for the budget because they have to set the rate that the people who are assessed have to pay. So they have to approve that budget, and it goes through a public hearing and all the meetings, and then Hamilton Street Board are all open to the public. Our wonderful member of the press has been at, I think, just about every meeting, right? I think every meeting.
And these cameras are for security purposes?
Yes, they will be there. We actually have one that's being tested right now on the street to see... With the police are working to see if it... The one that we have, the one we think we want is the one that the police are happy with and can do everything that they want.
Very good. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay.
Two things, one utterly trivial, which is in Section 1 of the ordinance, principal uses, it says, except body art establishments, you need a comma after establishments.
Really?
Because that's set off all of the other things are things which are permitted, the body art establishments.
Let's just start from scratch, Vince. This is no good without that comma.
You flunked English 101.
No, no, you wouldn't flunk the one comma.
And actually, I think, Ted, in passing, at one point, you had mentioned a typo, and this is of a little bit more significance, the definition of mixed-use building. It should read, a building containing two or more principal uses. In the HBD zone, a mixed-use building shall contain one or more of the principal or conditional permitted nonresidential uses and residential units with the entirety of the first floor, comma, or I'm sorry, parentheses, with the exception of necessary common and utility areas, parentheses being comprised of permitted nonresidential use. So that's how it should read, and the version of the ordinance that goes to council, if you adopt this, that's how it will read.
Well, if anybody on council notices that missing comma without...
Well, Ted will.
...these proceedings, I will give them an award of their choosing because that would be probably...
You've got to have a ringer there.
Yeah.
In Ted's defense, though, the...
Well, with the exception of Ted.
In Ted's defense, the corrections to the definition of mixed-use building were substantive and important, so thank you for that.
Okay.
Yeah, I should have noticed that again in this version, which I didn't. The other thing, I've asked this question before, and considering that we seem to have somebody objecting to our fair housing plan, it becomes a little more significant. The Penrose site, is that in the Hamilton Street Business District?
Yes, it is.
I just think it would be wiser not to make a change that would preclude apartment development on that site, just in case these objections gain any traction and we need to continue to include the Penrose development in our fair housing plan.
Well, I think what we should do with that is, you know, as Mr. Bakker had stated, we are going to be submitting our plan to the court. We are going to have an objection, and we anticipate. There may, for that reason or for other reasons, we may have to make amendments to our plan, and those amendments to the plan may involve the need for additional units. What I would suggest is, at that time, we reconsider the Penrose site and decide whether we need to add it back in.
No.
It's currently not, right?
Right, no. The plan that was presented to you previously, it is not in the plan.
Yeah, I was just thinking that, you know, even given that they've never shown any sign of actually building, the fact that we've had it in two previous plans would make it easy to continue to have it.
Well, it was in the one plan. It was in the plan that we actually ultimately received, the one that was where Melvin Design assisted us. It was in that plan, the plan that received substantive certification. Subsequent to that, we haven't heard a peep. So frankly for that...
But this rewrite doesn't preclude that, right? Now, it would basically now say, but you have to do mixed use, right? Not just standalone.
The development that they proposed was a standalone apartment development. This would change that, and that would no longer be permitted use. If, again, if the need arises, where we have to look at additional opportunities, that, at least from a overall planning perspective, you know, Hamilton Street aside, from an overall planning perspective, that would be an appropriate site. It's in an area with sewer, with water, with all the necessary infrastructure in place, in proximity to public transit, in all of the different things that make that area the township, you know, appropriate for that density of housing. Yeah, if the need arises, I think we should consider that site again.
Whereas Starlight Meadows, when hell freezes over...
Well, let's not...
From a...
Let's leave that for the special master. Because anything we say is on record. So straight back.
Bob?
Bob, and then Bob.
I wouldn't. I was going to wait until later. I'd like to piggyback a comment on that concerning Starlight.
No.
No, we should really not have any comments on that.
No.
Well, I'm not talking about them specifically. I was going to say that I think that the staff and the board, over the years, really should be commended for being proactive in developing the fair housing plan. And those people who were here from the beginning can remember all the other objectors that were here telling us how crazy we were because these things never happened. The only reference I would make to Starlight is, to me, this is a real-life example of a potential builder's remedy that could happen without a certified fair housing plan being in effect. And I tend to keep it because when these other objectors come and say, you're crazy for worrying about affordable housing, builder's remedies don't happen, well, here's a potential one. This is what we're protecting the town.
So wait a minute, right now, we're in the Hamilton Street Business Master Plan hearing.
Well, Ted brought up...
Well, never mind, Ted. We got it confined into this, we got it open to the public. Do we have anything else on the Hamilton Street? The time for that was packed.
Bob?
Bob?
Yeah, I'm going to bring up a name from Franklin's history, but not Franklin's distant history, which is Nancy Henry. And one of her, who used to represent this part of the township, and one of her hopes was concerning the, I think what's been described as the builder's yard, which fronts on Matilda, I believe, and is somewhat across from Naaman Williams Park. And I think she had always hoped that that might be added for somewhat of an open space use, perhaps to provide some additional recreation, but to provide some more open space in a congested part of the township. And so, whereas I'm not going to object to what you want to do here, I guess my suggestion would be that as Hamilton Street progresses, one of the things that you might want to look at is perhaps using portions, if you manage to get a larger tract, using portions at least for some additional open space.
Yeah, and I appreciate that comment. We... Yeah, that's... As you know, that's not the subject of this. This is really just the zoning. But having a, some type of small park where the public could gather along Hamilton Street is something that the Hamilton Street Advisory Committee has identified as something that would be beneficial. So it's been identified through that as well. The REC Needs Advisory, oh, I'm sorry, the REC Needs Assessment, that plan that was done a few years ago, the need for that type of park along Hamilton Street was also recommended in there as well. Thank you.
All right, let's go ahead and open to the public for this.
Make a motion to open it to the public.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody from the public wishing to speak on the Hamilton Street? Going once, twice, thrice?
Move to close to the public.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Same protocol? Okay.
Make a motion to adopt the master plan update for the Hamilton Street card.
I'll second.
Councilman Chase.
Yes.
Mr. Howe.
Yes.
Steinauer.
Yes.
Mr. Guyver.
Yes.
Mr. Mettler.
Yes.
Mr. Oniaka.
Yes.
Mr. Pettit.
Yes.
Mr. Thomas.
Yes.
Chairman Arcini.
Yes. And to adopt the resolution before us, memorializing it.
Make a motion.
Second.
Councilman Chase.
Yes.
Carl.
Howk.
Yes.
Steinauer.
Yes.
Mr. Guyver.
Yes.
Mr. Mettler.
Yes.
Mr. Oniaka.
Yes.
Mr. Pettit.
Yes.
Mr. Thomas.
Yes.
Chairman Arcini.
Yes. Do we have anything else tonight, Vince?
Nope.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Make the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.